Kevin, does that work for us? And then we could still?
Yes. And just so I understand, so it's either the applicant gives you proof that from the, it can be interior enclosed and complies with all prevailing building and construction code requirements, or in the alternative, you're going to have that outside plan, or it's going to be, it's going to be outside, not visible from the public side, from the front, or the side, or the rear of the home. It's going to be cut out, what is it, in the back of the home? And then, does that cricket combination, does that come in for both scenarios, or only one?
That's there regardless. That's why I would propose to submit a revised of plans either way, because if everything I've drawn otherwise is correct, I can just add that on. The cricket, and then resubmit, or if everything as I've drawn is not correct, I can modify the location of the condenser, and then add on the cricket too as well.
So it's to include, or include a cricket to help control water runoff issues? And again, I think Mr. Chairman typically subject to the review and approval, the details subject to the review and approval of the borough engineer.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. And Mr. Bianchi, if I could just ask you a question. If I understand right, this application is only requesting two variances. One is the hot tub in the front yard, and two is, I guess he needs almost a zero point, I don't even know what it would be. I do see a measurement on the plans, but I don't know what it is. I can't make it out. It's, let's, for the sake of argument, call it a 0.01 foot setback is proposed, where zero point, where that same amount is existing, where five feet is required from a side, for a side yard setback?
Yeah, there's a five-foot side yard setback. I got a question. Any part of this roof structure, the sop or anything, going to hang over the property line?
It doesn't, so first of all, it's not abundantly clear when I walk the property, where exactly the line is. Now, there is a small gap between the property line on the survey, and between the garage, and I think I can tell where that is as I walk the property. We have like a very small retaining wall next to the, or in front of the garage, that sticks further towards the neighbor's property than the garage wall itself. So there appears to be at least several inches of setback now. So I would propose that the, whatever overhang we do on the roof, just stay within that, you know, that distance, and then we have no encroaching.
Okay. What's going to happen here is, when you get done with this, we're going to need an as-built survey, and it's going to have to show where the roof structure winds up, and it can't be on the other guy's property.
Right.
So you might as well, you might as well have it done before you start, so you know exactly where it's at.
Right.
Otherwise, you're going to be taking it off.
Sure. That includes gutters. So even including the gutters have to be on our side of the property?
You can't have any part of that garage structure on the other man's property.
Got it. Okay.
So you're going to need an as-built survey when you get done, so I can tell exactly where it's at.
Sure. Yeah, that's what I figured, but I wanted to get.
Okay.
All right. Did anybody else have any questions before I open it up to public comment?
Yeah. Am I allowed to join the meeting on the next application?
You've got to wait till the next application, Bob.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. No problem.
Yeah.
Sorry, I've got a little power failure here. Everything died.
No problem.
I need electrician.
Mr. Chairman, since you asked, like, I would just, maybe I needed to be more clear on this, well, but I'm like, very close to 100% sure that condensers have to be located in an exterior location, and I'm uncomfortable searching around for a manufacturer that says otherwise, and I'm also uncomfortable with making that Ted's responsibility to review those specifications and determine whether or not this inside location is or is not okay. So I would, I would make, for my own personal sake, I want to be clear to Mr. Miller, that that cavity that Mr. Ross drew would be the one and only method that I'd want to recommend and approve as part of this application. I'm not comfortable with this either-or scenario, that somehow in the future, you know, pick A or B. Like, I think we as a board need to be more definitive about that, and say, we know that condensers need to be placed outside. I don't know about this mysterious internal inside place condensers, but I'm almost positive, fire code, airflow, efficiency, these condensers are made to be placed out of doors.
Yeah. I mean, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't proposing a choice. I was proposing more of a decision tree, where if the answer to the first question, are the plans as drawn acceptable? If the answer turns out to be no, then we go on to the other location of a condenser. If everybody's that confident that it's impossible to enclose, then I can, I can agree with that. I only cited my previous approvals at my old house, where it was underneath a porch, where the walls were fairly enclosed.
Out of doors, you have outside air, and even though you may not have respected the clearances, at least it's out of doors, but inside, a structure, you don't have the air intake necessary to keep that condenser cool. So, in any case, I just want to be clear, I don't see this double scenario. I think I'm, my vote will be contingent on the drawing that, or something similar to what Mr. Ross had shown, so.
That's fine with me. If everybody's certain, then I'll certainly go along with that.
Well, I'm just one of many. It's not, it's not my, it's only, it's not, I'm just expressing where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. So you're not asking that to be a condition of the application, but you're indicating that it may be a condition of your vote?
Right. I don't want to move, I mean, we're in the question section, but yes, I think that that will become a requirement, that it be installed outside in the roof cavity facing the house, as opposed to even leaving open the possibility that it's going to be installed indoors.
Okay. Well, I don't want to turn it into too much of a debate. I don't have any expertise on HVAC condenser units, and for me, I would say, I would rather leave the choice to them, and, you know, it's got to be code compliant one way or the other, in my opinion. So I would leave it at that. And if any other board members want to weigh in, one way or the other, I just, I don't, I personally try not to pin people in. I think that cutout's a great idea. It also is going to create some sort of access issue, when that has to be maintained at some point, and maybe you're going to go up and over the roof at that point. I have no doubt there's an engineering solution to this. I think I'd prefer it on the inside of this building, if you could find one, but I'm not proposing that, and I'm not asking anybody to side on with that, I'm just saying that, you know, I think it's the applicant's decision to find the right and approvable solution. I'm fine with the decision tree or the two options.
Yeah. I mean, right. And just for clarity, I'm not going to, I'm not going to search for any manufacturer's specs. I mean, the manufacturer is what it is, and the specs are what they are. If the answer is yes, then that's fine. If the answer is no, then that's fine too. You know, we have a perfectly good alternative, so, you know, I think it should be fairly straightforward to research and get an answer.
Okay. Thank you. Did any other board members want to make this a condition of the application, one way or the other? All right. We can always revisit if we need to. I think with that, Mr. Bianchi, is there anything you wanted to add on this, before I open it up to the public?
No, I'm done.
Okay. All right. April, we will open it up to the public. If you're in the public to speak on this application, please raise your hand, or reach out to April, and we'll be able to give you the mic.
And April, why don't you just recite your email one more time?
Sure. It's clerk@belmar.com. Just give me one second. I had some technical difficulties on my end, and I want to just get back.
Okay. I do think I see somebody raising their hand.
Yes.
So we'll sit tight until you resolve it.
Sorry about that. We have one. Okay. Just for, if you're speaking from the public, just remember to state your name and address before you speak.
Linda Sharacus, Fourth Avenue. I'd just like to make a comment.
This is where you end, Ms. Sharacus. Good evening. Do swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you guide.
I do.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up, and if this garage was in a different location, where you might have some space, it may be a consideration to put the air, the condenser unit in the garage, but considering the fact that it's so densely packed on the south end of town, anything that might present a risk, even though the manufacturer might say it's okay, I think we should avoid that kind of structure, potential problem. So, like Mr. Ross and Mr. Fitzgerald said, I think you should go with the option outside the garage, just based on safety and reducing fire potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharacus. Do we have anybody else from the public that wants to speak on this application?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public portion, and go back to forward comment, and we will start back again with Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I'm in favor of the application. I can see Mr. Fitzgerald's point, but I think it's okay to, you know, leave this to a decision tree, as the applicant has said, but I do feel, in retrospect, as opposed to my first comments here, that it really should be outside. I think that probably would be the best, the best solution, but we can leave that, I think, to the applicant, because he does have to meet approvals, and the borough engineer and the, and Mr. Bianchi, so I'll go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hutchinson. Next up is Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yeah. So, you know, pretty much where I left it, I don't, I just wish that that research had been done prior to the meeting. I understand the decision tree, so, you know, perhaps I could live with that, but I just don't feel comfortable, because I'm almost, again, I, we've all spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, I've been involved, and I've never seen a condenser placed inside. So it's, through some miracle, it's possible, and there's a manufacturer out there that does it, I will stand corrected, and my 1% chance might come true. So I'm not going to hold up my vote on that alone, so I'm going to capitulate a little bit there, but I do think it's, should be a requirement, and I'll leave the decision tree, I guess, be the way that it gets handled. I am steadfast on being, you know, specific about the hedgerow around the hot tub, and not, you know, open to the street, so I would make that a requirement of the application, and with those two things, I would be in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. And just a note, I do believe that hedgerow was made a condition of the application. Mr. Ross?
Yeah. So as long as you find a building, building department in code compliant location, that doesn't require variance, I think I'm in favor of the application. I was merely trying to provide an alternative for you, so I don't want to make that the sole solution. If you can be even more creative than that, that's great. Just was trying to limit the exposure to the neighbors, and the sight view of the street, if at all possible. But I do want to say, you have a very nice house, and you seem to have very good taste, so I'm sure that, you know, where you put it all, and how you finish it will be very tasteful. So I'm in favor of the application in overall.
Fishing for an invite for the hot tub, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think so. No.
Mr. Pomizano, you're up next. Can you hear me?
He's muted.
Can you hear me now?
How about now? I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Pomizano.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm also in favor if they do everything like they're saying, they're going to, you know, make it presentable, and everything else for the public, I would be in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Malengo?
Yes. I would be in favor of the application. I would like to see the condenser on the exterior, if possible, and I want to thank you, Cory, for considering the cricket. Will definitely eliminate water problems on that side of nails.
Thank you. I too am in favor of the application, and have no major additional comments. With that, Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Sure. We took, I took a couple of notes as to what any potential conditions of approval would be, and give me a little bit of leeway here, because I think we went back, and given the nature of it, so we went back a couple times. So, among other things, would be compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations that the applicant made tonight, compliance with all building and construction code regulations, and compliance with any affordable housing regulations at the borough. And I think we say here that the, obviously, the hot tub is residential use, and it's going to be installed and maintained in accordance with manufacturing and borough standards. We talked about the privacy curtains, and we're going to get the, definitely the hedgerows, we'll come back to that in a little bit. Let's see. Gutters, I think we talked about. Pitch to the west, and obviously grading and drainage details to be reviewed by the borough engineer. We talked a little bit about the height. Clearly, there's no height variance granted here. It's going to comply with the testimony. Garage is not to be utilized as living space. I'll come back to the air conditioning things in a minute. And the tall plantings, in addition to the curtains around the hot tub. And I think we usually say, Mr. Chairman, there to be properly maintained and replaced and replanted as necessary. And, okay. We talked about the installation of the cricket system, and the details of which will be approved by the borough engineer. Obviously, everything has to be fire rated, given the nature of the, with the garage, given the nature of the existing and proposed distances. I guess we're going to clarify that that variance is, three feet is not required, rather, five feet is required. And, okay. Oh, and just one other thing, Mr. Chairman, I know there was some talk about, hey, I don't exactly know where the survey line is, and all things, I just, going on Ted's point, just for the benefit of the applicant, and this is every case, every, every file, we have no authority to give an applicant the ability to build on another person's property. You know, we just don't have that authority and can't do it, and I think Ted was saying, you're going to have to submit the as-built surveys as a condition of this approval, number one, and number two, if there's a problem, it's one of those things that you're going to have to do it, if it turns out to be a problem. So we would encourage the applicant to do that ahead of time, so as to avoid that potential headache. The overhang is going to stay within the existing distance. And, all right. So now I just need the direction again on the, is it going to be, Mr. Chairman, that if the applicant can provide confirmation to Ted? And I agree with Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ted's obligation to go find, it's got to be that the applicant provides the acceptable and confirming documentation that, that is allowed in accordance with the, the interior installation and enclosure. If that's allowed, they've got to give the proof of that, and then if not, if they can't give that proof, you're going to go to, what I'm going to informally refer to as Mr. Ross's option for that cutout in the roof?
That's, 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 that's the options that we're offering.
Okay. And it's a cutout on the roof, on which side again? Which side of the house?
Be on the north side of the garage roof.
Right. North side of the garage roof.
North side of garage roof. And I think we had said, not visible, and no additional variance is created. So that would be, you know, the option, and we would just, the applicant would have to figure it out one way or the other, prior to the, you know, issuance of permits, but, I mean, that makes sense, that he would. So, Mr. Chairman, I think those.
Kevin, could I interrupt you one second? I was the one that put in the not visible, and I don't know that that causes a problem or not.
Okay.
So it would be a cutout.
Appropriately, or, you know, somewhat camouflaged, or discreetly camouflaged, something I should put those words in there?
Yeah. I think if you wordsmithed it that way, that would be, that would be better.
Got it. So, Mr. Miller, you heard those conditions. Are you okay in accepting of those conditions?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I definitely am going to need some wordsmith on some of this, but we'll have that, but I definitely have the understanding of what the board members want, and what the applicant has agreed to, and I think it was a good, healthy, productive discussion, and I, if it's acceptable, Mr. Chairman, we can have a vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Can I have a motion to approve the application for Corin and Dawn Miller at 1701 Surf Avenue?
Motion.
Mr. Fitzgerald? And a second from Mr. Malengo.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Malengo?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Pomizano? Tom, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Do you want to, are you voting yes or no on the application?
Yes. I'm voting yes.
Okay. And Mr. Lisco?
Yes. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Miller. Your application is approved.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, guys. I appreciate the feedback.
Sure. Have a good evening.
Can I leave? Should I leave now?
Yes.
All right. Is there anybody in the, is there anybody on the board that needs a five-minute break before we move on to the next one? All right. I see none, so I would say that we can roll right into the next application.
Mr. Chair, do I need to be recognized that I'm part of this next application?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hold on one sec. Let's get everybody ready.
While April's getting everybody ready, our next application is Robert Truesdale at 319 10th Avenue.
Hey. And as the, Mr. Chairman, I usually say, as the applicants come forward, but I guess in this remote world, I'm going to have to get a new phrase, but as the applicant's team zoom in, let's ask if there's anyone from the public here, from the listening public, who had any questions, or comments, or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice? And if you do have any such questions or concerns, or during this hearing have any, if you're having computer difficulties, or having access or access barriers, our wonderful board secretary is on call and available to help us troubleshoot. And April, for the record, your email address is?
clerk@belmar.com.
Okay. So, April, has anyone expressed any questions or comments about wanting to speak about the notice?
No.
Okay. So.
Bill, is there anyone else, or is it just the two of you? You there? We have to wake those up.
There we go.
You just have to unmute, Bill.
How about that?
That's good. Is it just the two of you speaking, or is there anyone else?
Bob, is that you down there?
I'm here.
Yes, I'm here.
The architect, Walter Hesberger.
Where's Mr. Hesberger?
Okay. I see him. Hold on one sec.
There we go.
There we go.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. Again, for the record, the applicant did, in the notice, include the login information, and it indicate that the plans and applications were available through the borough's website, and that if special arrangements needed to be made, they could call the board secretary in advance to make those special arrangements. So it would be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight, sir. And if that's it, I'll just mark in, well, let me do, second time tonight, we'll swear in, Ted Bianchi, you are the borough's construction official and zoning official. Do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Like the record reflects, Mr. Bianchi has been sworn, and, Mr. Chairman, as part of the evidence, we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. First is the development application package dated January 14, 2020. We'll mark that as A1. A2 will be the Borough of Belmar application checklist. A3 will be the Borough of Belmar Minor Land Use Certificate, and that's dated September 4, 2019. And A4 is the architectural plans prepared by Walter Hesberger, and it's dated November 1, 2019, consisting of three sheets. And A5 is a, let's see, A5 is a survey prepared by George Anderson, and don't have the exact date on that, but we'll get that momentarily. And April, were there any pictures I had to enter in, or no? April, I think you're on mute. Any pictures I had to enter into?
I think we're good.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mr. Shipers.
Good evening. Hello?
Just a second. If I could just remind everybody that if you're not presenting or speaking to the applicant, could you please mute your microphone? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, I would first enter my appearance, William J. Shipers, Shammy Shipers in Loski, Belmar and New Brunswick, on behalf of Mr. Robert Truesdale. We're going to, I'm going to ultimately ask that Mr. Truesdale and Mr. Hesberger be sworn. I'm going to give, if with your permission, Mr. Lisco, a very short opening statement. I think we'll be able to get to really the crux of this application promptly and efficiently, and hopefully get you onto your third application. This matter is the corner of 10th and C, 319 10th Avenue. There's an existing two-and-a-half-story structure on the property. There's an existing garage. Mr. Truesdale wants to effectively take down what is there, and replace with a two-and-a-half square, modern, new, efficient, attractive structure designed by Mr. Hesberger. There, there are very few variances. There, uh, there are very few variances. I come before the board tonight. It's a R seventy-five zone. Two existing non-conformities are the seven thousand five hundred square foot of the lot and a sixty-foot, uh, front requirement where fifty, is onsite. It's a fifty-by-one-fifty lot. Front yard setbacks conform, side yard setbacks conform, rear yard setbacks conform, height conforms. Floor area ratio is, uh, under the requirement. Impervious is under the requirements. And the only thing here that we're asking of the, uh, the, the town is the required maximum building coverage is twenty-five percent. Existing is thirty-three point three. Uh, our proposal has cropped up, uh, thirty-four, uh, point eight, which is only, uh, one and a half, uh, percentages. Existing, there are, uh, a requirement for three cars to exist in the existing garage. Hello? And propose, 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 proposed as a two-car, uh, garage, but I do wanna make, um, I'll have a little discussion about that. To the south, there is, uh, a ten, effectively a ten-foot by fifty-foot, um, setback that I believe we could also use as a, uh, parking lot with some modification to the, um, driveway, uh, into the existing garage, so we become code compliant.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shipers, did you say, um, how many parking spaces are required?
Three.
And how many are proposed?
Well, there is two shown on the existing garage, uh, that exists on the plot plan. There is ten point six-five feet and nine point nine-six feet to the south of the garage with a modification to the driveway apron. I think we could comply if the board desires.
Okay.
For, for a third car on site. I'd also mention that currently existing, uh, according to the tax records of Ms. Claudia, um, and, uh, the property is a multifamily, and we're going to be abandoning the multifamily, which I think is substantial. And with that, uh, what I would do is call the architect once he's sworn, and we'll move through what is proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Shipers, keep going.
All right, Mr. Hesberger, uh, you, you need to be sworn by the, uh, Board Attorney.
Uh, good evening. If you could just state your name and spell your last name, please?
Yes, Walter Hesberger, H-E-S-S-E-R-G-E-R.
I'm sorry, H-E-S-S?
E-R-G-E-R.
Okay, thank you. Um, and you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed architect?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. If you raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
All right, thank you. Let the witness reflect, or let the record reflect that the witness has been sworn.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Hesberger. I'm Mr. Shipers. We didn't get to meet be- before now. But it's my pleasure, sir. Could you give the board a brief background of your, uh, education and your employment in the field of architecture?
Well, I, um, I've been a licensed architect since nineteen sixty-eight. So that's about fifty-three years. And a few years before that, I went to, uh, Newark College of Engineering, which is now, um, New Jersey Architectural School. My main practice was up, uh, in North Jersey, uh, out of Summit. We had a medium-sized office, uh, fifteen people. We did schools, office buildings, all, uh, libraries, uh, municipal buildings, uh, a lot of, uh, work there. And then, um, in two thousand, uh, nine, when my partners retired, I had two other partners, I, I moved my practice down to Brick where I live now. And I've been doing mostly, um, residential, although I do, do some commercial. And, um, did a lot of work after, uh, Superstorm Sandy, uh, designing new foundations and raising houses, so. So, um, that, basically, I'm, I'm also, um, have a registration for NCARB, which is the National Council of Architectural Reservation Boards. And, um, they're the ones who actually, um, come, um, make up the architectural land test. And by having, um, a certificate with them, it allows me to get a license in any state without, um, taking a test or, or going to an interview. I just have to apply and they send my information there and I become licensed. I have had a license in New York and, uh, and Pennsylvania, but, um, and that's about it.
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, with that fifty-three years of experience, I think he's got the knack of this. I would move to, uh, qualify Mr. Hesberger as an, a, uh, expert in architecture.
I would agree, Mr. Shipers. We certainly accept those credentials. Welcome, Mr. Hesberger.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Hesberger, you, I'm gonna, uh, direct your attention to your three pages of, uh, plans and elevations, if you would, okay?
Yeah, well, the, uh, the first plan obviously was the, sort of the main crux of this whole, uh, meeting. It's a site plan. And of course, uh, it indicated, uh, properties within two hundred feet. And of course, it had all the zoning information on it.
Yeah, let's jump, let's jump to the zoning. You heard my, uh, opening statement that we have two existing, um, land-based, uh, variance requests, the nine hundred or nine thousand square feet required, and we only have seventy-five hundred, not that we only, we have seventy-five hundred square feet and we need a sixty-foot front back. We own, set fifty, sixty-foot width. We only have fifty. Those are two pre-existing conditions, correct?
Correct.
And you, you took notice of our R seventy-five zone with Mr. Truesdale when you designed this home? And what you were able to do was to bring into conformity with your desires and Mr. Truesdale says ours, effectively every, um, bulk requirement other than the maximum building coverage. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Now, when we look at, sir, the maximum lot, uh, impervious coverage, it is effectively a, uh, the minimus increase from, um, thirty-three point, uh, three percent as existing to thirty-four point eight. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the maximum building coverage, right, so.
Correct. And when you designed the home, you tried to design this home effectively within the same envelope and, uh, bulk criteria as pre-existing, correct?
Yes, yes, the, uh, the intent was that the house that is presently there was, uh, basically sufficient in size. It just needed, uh, a lot more work. So, uh, I essentially kept it, uh, the same size, which you can see, uh, um, the, uh, it's, it's well, the impervious surface is well, the, the building coverage is, um, it was thirty-three point three originally, and I, I had it within one and a half percent of that, so. So that was pretty close.
Okay, you, you maintained your, uh, easterly setback, uh, at five foot, which is conforming, correct?
Yes.
Your front yard, you have the house set at twenty-two with a ten-foot porch, so there's still a twelve-foot, um,
Right.
Let's say, front from the front of the porch to the front of the property line, correct?
Yes.
And then I think on the C Street side, you provide fourteen feet to, uh, what I'll call that little bump-out vestibule, entry vestibule, with another six foot to the main structure. So there's a, effectively a twenty-foot conforming, but for that bump-out, uh, second front yard setback, correct?
Well, the second front car, we, we're talking about the, um, C Street?
Yes.
Yeah, well, C Street, what happened there was that we had to, um, as the ordinance, uh, allows, uh, what we did is we did the average setback of all the houses on C Street. And that became our required setback, so the, the twenty-foot setback no longer applied there. And the average setback of the houses on C Street was eleven point four eight feet, which we have a survey. I, I'm assuming it was submitted, uh, a surveyor who established those dimensions.
And you maintained twelve feet to the porch, fourteen feet to the vestibule, and twenty feet to the structure, correct?
Right.
Okay. You note that the off-street parking requirement is three, two existing. Did you hear my, uh, discussion in my opening? That, uh, we, we could place another car to the south of the existing garage and eliminate that variance if the board so requires or would request of us. That would mean some alteration perhaps of either a, a wider curb cut than existing or some sort of manipulation of the, uh, the entry, entryway surf, surface. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes, I think, uh, um, I would just like to point out one thing, basically, that, um, the, if I'm reading the zoning right, um, it allows, um, cars to park in the front yard if it's in the driveway. Now, I don't know whether I'm reading it wrong or not, but, um, that's the, the one, uh, zoning ordinance that, that, so originally I had it there, but, um, but if, if you parked in the driveway, you would be partially in the front yard.
Yeah, and we only have thirteen point seven, seven.
Right.
Thirteen point seven seven, that means there has to be a small car parked across the two doors of the garage, which I think we would prefer to avoid. Let's see, let me get to a few other things. Where are the AC condensers going to be on a proposed house? Where are they gonna be field-located?
Beg pardon?
Where, where, uh, are your, uh, air conditioning condensers going to be field-located?
Yeah, if, um, if, um, Belmar is like most towns, um, it can't be within any of the setbacks, so we couldn't put it on the side of the building. So, um, I'm suggesting that it would go to the rear of the building, in the rear yard, either possibly on the patio that we had planned there or off to the side somewhere, but not any closer than five feet to the side, side yard.
Okay. You would be willing to work with Mr. Bianchi on, uh, field placing those, uh, AC condensers where they would not offend, uh, the plan or the ordinance?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay, Mr. Truesdale, you'd be good with that, right? Okay. The, uh, electric service for the, um, home, there's generally a, um, desire in Belmar that, uh, the electric be, uh, underground if possible. Do you see any problem making that a condition of the application?
Um, not if Mr. Truesdale doesn't. I, I have no problem with that. I, I prefer it actually, but, so I'm, I'm certainly think that makes sense.
Okay. When I look at your, uh, page two, it appears you are proposing a, um, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-story home with a bonus room that appears to be conforming to our half-story ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the elevations, we get to see, so it's a very pretty home. What type of materials, if any, could you tell the board that you're gonna spec for the exterior, the roof and the, uh, porch railings?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you with me?
This also comply with the, um, capital, uh, this is not a zoning issue, but a building department, a building permit issue, uh, to use the, uh, upper floor of the habit, uh, habitable attic, which is the bonus room. And it has to, it can't have any more than, uh, certain square footage over seven feet. So, that's my calculations on the habitable attic also, which again is not a zoning issue as much as it is a building permit issue.
The, uh, the home itself, what type of, uh, roof, uh, exterior and, uh, decking and porch materials are you spec-ing? Or is that something you're still talking?
Well, it's, we talked about it, and I think the roof, uh, we'd like to use the standing ceiling roof. Uh, I think Mr. Truesdale likes that, and, um, on the side, we haven't really, uh, determined what kind of siding. But I know, um, you have probably a rendering that was submitted by email from Mr. Truesdale, which shows a, sort of depicts, um, pretty much what it's gonna look like color-wise and, and everything else.
Okay. Uh, from your experience both as an architect, I assume you walk the site or you're at the site?
Yes.
You, you see no negative, uh, impacts upon neighbors, uh, or the, or substantial detriment to the master plan, do you?
No, no, I don't see anything. We, we basically, um, as far as the site goes, we're basically keeping, negating pretty much as is. And, uh, you know, we're doing some additional landscaping, and the house is gonna be, uh, as far as, um, footprint on the site is gonna be pretty close with there, and I think it's not, uh, I see no detrimental effect to, um, any of the neighbors.
With, with the effective same, uh, building coverage and, and lot coverage, you don't see any, um, uh, additional water runoff or additional, uh, drainage issues other than that are onsite at the current time, do you?
Yeah, no, the, uh, obviously the impervious, um, area requirement is fifty percent. And we're at, uh, forty-six point nine percent, so we're well under his requirement. The only difference is, it's a little bit more, it's about, um, two percent more, uh, than, uh, two point nine percent more than what's existing. So, it's negligible, the, the added, uh, impervious material.
All right, and how, how are you gonna take the, uh, rainwater off the roof? Uh, is it through, through, um, uh, gutters, downspouts?
Yeah, and the existing house has, has no downspouts, so it, it sort of runs off all over the place. But we're gonna put downspouts, which will help, um, uh, enable us to do a little direction on the water, once it gets down to grays. You know, we just pull it towards the back and, and the front, keep it from going on the neighbor's property.
Exactly. Your design, from your perspective, is not gonna have any additional adverse water runoff on Lot Seven, uh, or Lot Nine, correct?
No, that's correct. Definitely not.
Okay. I have no other questions of Mr. Hesberger at this time. I'd call Mr. Truesdale just very briefly. You there, Mr. Truesdale?
I'm here, yeah.
Okay.
Swear you in. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Robert Truesdale, three nineteen Tenth Avenue, Belmar.
And just spell your last name, please? All right, good evening, and welcome to the Belmar Zoning Board. If you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, the witness has been sworn.
Uh, Mr. Truesdale, may I call you Bob?
Yes, sir, that'd be fine.
Uh, Bob, you've heard my, uh, intro, you heard, uh, Mr. Hesberger testify regarding your plot plan. In particular, I wanna discuss with you the potential of an additional car to the south of your existing, uh, garage if in fact the board would allow you to amend your existing paver, either curb cut or right-of-way into that third, um, uh, area to the south of your garage. Is that something you'd be willing to do and honor?
Yeah, yes, it would.
Okay. I think we've pretty much pointed out everything else. This is an old home, right? It's built around nineteen oh two or something of that nature. Is that correct?
Nineteen oh three, yeah.
Right, it's, uh, effectively, you looked at it, you said- Right, it's effectively, you looked at it, you said what it would take to put it in the shape and manner and beauty that you would desire. You're preferring to clean this slate, start over, build a beautiful home that will enhance the neighborhood, the borough, and rid a deferred maintenance home, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. I bought the house with the intention of renovating it, but after talking to three builders, two local builders, they pretty much all told me the same thing. You know, it's going to cost them just as much money or more. At the end of the day, I can still have an old foundation, old framing, and the house might not be perfectly square and level. So they all strongly recommended I do what I'm doing, that we take the house down and start over again.
Are you going to put a basement in the new home?
Yeah, I plan to, yes.
Okay. Do you have an idea where you want to field locate your air conditioning condensers, Mr. Truesdale?
In the back of the yard. I'm assuming that's what, you know, that's what's allowed or required, I should say.
Okay.
I'd love to put on the side, my neighbors are on the side, but if that's not required, I'll put them in the back.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Truesdale. And I think you have this, that's the summary of the application. You have the pre-existing survey. I trust your abilities from knowing this board, with your ability to see what exists, what is proposed. I submit there is no negative impact whatsoever, only positive impacts, both to the neighborhood, the town, positive impact to the zoning code. And generally, I like to talk for a lot more than 15 or 20 minutes, but I don't think this application requires it. I think I want to turn it over to Ted and the board and respond there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Schakers. We will open it right up with four questions, and we'll go to Mr. Fitzgerald first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It does look like a pretty straightforward application. I don't have any particular questions. I would like to just, you know, since the question of condensers came up, obviously, those condensers would be not in a concerning location. It would be, you know, within the setback requirements and things like that. So as long as, you know, there's some clarity that you're not asking for relief on location of the condensers, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, so I did get the email with your, like, your rendering of what you want it to look like. It looks very nice. Is that real cedar shakes on there, or is that like a composite material?
Well, two things, please don't hold me to the color, because I'm not 100% committed to that. I did use the house I liked with that color, so that's why I had it rendered that way. But I don't know if that makes any difference, but I don't want to be 100% committed to that. It does show like a cedar siding, I'm hoping to use that. But I'd be quite honest, I got to look when I did some prices and all that, because I know it's very expensive, and if not, I'm going to probably go to Hardy Board. I pretty much promise you won't be planting plastic on the outside of my house.
Right, so the existing garage is going to stay. Are you planning on re-siding that as well, or is that going to?
Yeah, I would say yes. I don't know whether during this project or after the project, but eventually I will.
Okay, I mean, it looks like it's in pretty good shape, I just was curious, the garage, right?
It is, it's only about 12 to 14 years old, I believe.
Yeah.
The previous owner put it up, not me.
Okay, that's the only questions I had.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. And just a minor point to Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Ross referenced an artist rendering, I don't think that was identified as an exhibit.
Let's mark that in, Mr. Chairman, excellent call, artist rendering of the proposal. By whom was that prepared, Bill, do you know?
Bob, who was that prepared by?
Oh, I don't know, I had it done online. It was done on a company in Canada.
Okay.
I really forget, I forget the name.
And we'll mark that as April, I think we're up to A6, right?
Correct, Kevin, A6.
So we'll mark that as A6, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. That brings us to Mr. Malengo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just have a few small questions. I want to compliment you on the design. You set the house up, looks great. Now, the garage, are you intending to put gutters and leaders on that garage currently? At my visit, there was?
Yeah, I would like to do that, yes.
Okay, I see the grates eroding in the back of the garage.
Yes.
And the room?
Yes.
The finished room on top of the garage will remain just for storage, correct?
Storage, it was a gym, workout room, but yes. Right now, it's storage, because I got all my stuff in there until I build the house.
Okay, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malengo, Mr. Capoli. And just a reminder that you're on mute, Mr. Capoli, we can't hear you yet. You're on mute.
You guys, you couldn't hear me? How's that better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The garage building there, is there water and sewer to that building?
The existing garage, you're estimating?
Yes.
There's no water to that garage?
No sewer?
No sewer to that.
Nothing, okay, there's no apartment upstairs, is what I'm getting.
There is electric.
Okay.
Only electric.
Okay, deciding material, you answered. Are you going to move to this house? Do you plan on moving?
Yeah, absolutely, I want to live in there.
Good. The curb cut, do we need to discuss a different-sized curb cut? Because there's a possibility of making it a little wider so he can get that other car in there? Ted, do we need to do that, so he can do that if possible?
I have a question, is this an existing garage that's going to stay or new garage?
Existing, Ted, that's that.
It's existing, you're not relocating it or anything?
No.
Okay. What was your question again?
I asked, seeing as there's a proposal to possibly put a parking spot alongside the garage, as long as I guess it meets the setbacks on the other property. Do we need to, at this time, give him permission for a wider curb cut so he can get into that space?
Yeah, I mean, the borough ordinance is 12 feet, so anything past that, what's the width of the curb cut now?
You know?
I would defer to the architect, but I think it's about 20 feet.
I think it's 20 or 22 feet.
It's about 20 or 22, Ted.
Okay, what's your proposal, Bill?
My proposal, Ted, I think, you know, to widen the curb cut to approximately six feet more to the south. Now, I don't know if you guys would like us to move the, keep, try to keep the curb cut a little less in width and slide the whole curb cut down. I would, you know, if we're going to have to redo curbing anyway, so maybe we slide the northern part of the curb cut slightly, south by a few feet, and then about another four, four or five feet to the south of where it is existing, that could serve us all three, two in a garage and one on the property.
Can I say something? I don't think a wider curb cut's a good idea, to be quite honest.
Say that again, Bob?
I just don't think a wider curb cut's that great of an idea, to be quite honest.
Do you think you would, how would you maneuver a car to get in that direction?
Drive in and drive around to the side, we could put paving stones or whatever required there. Or, you know, I'll be quite honest, I have a BMW, mid-sized BMW, I can park in my driveway and be 10-foot clearance of the right-of-way, and I do it all the time. So, I mean, I'm looking for a variance for a spot, instead of having three spots, I want two. I don't know, is that a doable thing? Or do you really want me to improvise and try to do a wider curb cut and, you know, that type of thing?
Well, if that's your request, you can request that as we have of the board. I was offering a suggestion to the board where we could potentially provide another parking spot. If that is not within your desire, you'd be asking for the one-spot variance.
I was feeling on that, whether, how important that third spot is. I don't know, I'm just asking. You know, is that important to have a third spot versus, and to make it work in there versus not?
All right, I think we'll take their temperature. Ted, one other question, if I could ask of you. Do you see where the five English U's? I don't know what an English U is. I think it's landscaping. Do you see where that is on the C Street second front yard setback?
Yeah, that's basically, an English U is, I believe, would stay green all year round, and it can get up a pretty good size. So it's screening the deck from the street and also providing, you know, landscaping around the building.
Yeah, well, let me ask Mr. Bianchi. Ted, since the average setback is 11.48
Right.
on that side, would we be permitted without variance request to put the condensers essentially where the English U's are and then just scape the U's around the condensers?
Well, the thing is, Bill, that's a front yard. Even though the setback is there, it's still a front yard. You can't put mechanical equipment in the front yard.
So then, I guess practically, you could swing it another five to 10 feet south and put it up against the deck and screen it there.
Right, right, that would be out of the front yard, that would be.
Okay, got it.
I know it sounds ridiculous, but that's the way it works.
No, I hear you. That's why we're here, that's why we do what we are. Okay, so Bob, you would prefer the board to poll the board on the issue of?
I'd like to see, you know, that's an option, just to get a variance on the third parking spot. But if they, if we could, you know, I don't know how else you'd work out a parking spot, since it is a front yard, right? That's like, C Street's a front yard.
Yeah, I was just trying to help him out, that if he needed one, rather than go later and have a problem, do it now, you know?
By the way, I like to say, I'm a person that uses my garage for cars. I don't have, I've been in Belmar a little while now, I see a lot of garage opening up, and I don't see any cars, you know, I see a lot of other stuff. My garage, we use for cars. I'm a car guy, and I like them in every night, day, summer, winter, fall, and spring. So I'll be using my garage for cars.
The other, the drainage part was partially entered to my satisfaction. I live the next block over from you, I could almost see your house from where I am. And not only your area, but mine over on Ninth and stuff, when it rains, we don't have drains there, we have bubblers. The water literally comes around the curb, over the curb and onto the sidewalks. If you would be willing to, I would like to see wells put on the site to help alleviate that. Because when I tell you it's bad, Bob, it's really bad. You can't even walk on the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, I've been there for 14 months, and I got a storm drain right in the front corner between C and 10th. And I have to say, it works pretty good. I don't have the same, I'm not having the same issues you're having. Not that I wouldn't do that, but I'm just telling you right now, those issues aren't there, to be honest.
I would like to see some sort of wells put on the property to help whatever little it could in that area, not only your area, but the areas that go down towards the lake. It really gets bad when it rains.
Right.
So if you would put dry wells in, I'd be very susceptible for that. And that's it, that's all the questions that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli. Did we need to ask, did you want that to be a condition of the application, or you're just requesting?
I'd like to say it one, yes, because I know the neighborhood well. I've lived here for quite some time, had property here for almost 45 years, and it's been bad.
How about, rather than asking the applicant to put something in that we're specifying, would you be willing to say something like the applicant works to the satisfaction of the borough engineer to control onsite, control stormwater runoff onsite?
Definitely.
To the best possible? Mr. Schakers, is that something that you're willing to agree to?
I have no objection to that.
And Mr. Truesdale, I guess that's okay with you?
Yes, that's okay with me.
Okay, all right, Mr. Kennedy, if you'll just make that a condition of the application.
Oh, noted, thank you.
Thank you, and that brings me to Mr. Hutchinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Bob.
Hi.
Gorgeous, I know why the one that's existing there has to come down. It's been kind of an eyesore for a while.
It's definitely ugly.
But the design of the new house, I love it. It's a traditional Belmar, and with a big front porch, you should have a big front porch in Belmar.
That's what I think.
So I really like it.
I thought the same thing, when I went around Belmar, I thought the same thing, this house should fit into Belmar.
It's the best room in the house.
Yeah.
So I really don't have too much questions, I just think most of my questions have been answered, and that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. I don't have any other questions either, but I will weigh in on the parking spot. I actually agree with your assessment. I'm not sure that adding that or changing the curb cut is providing much value, especially to the south. I think we'd lose a street spot there. Your application is requesting a parking variance where three are required and only two are proposed. I have no objection to that proposal myself. So I just wanted to give you that feedback. Before I open it up to public comment, is there anybody else on the board that wanted to weigh in or ask any other questions?
The only other question I had, in reference to putting the parking spot alongside the garage, I'm okay with that, if it doesn't interfere with the neighbor. It's not too close to the neighbor's house or something like that. You know, if it's not, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Capoli. Mr. Bianchi, did we miss anything?
No, I don't think so. I think by putting the parking spot alongside the garage, now you've got two driveways. He wouldn't, it says one. So that would be a variance if you did that. But, you know, that was much my only comment.
Excuse me, but the other thing you're doing too is adding more impervious material, if you're going to widen that driveway out. So we're trying to really reduce the amount of runoff, so I kind of agree with Mr. Bianchi on that one.
And I'm not hearing the applicant propose that as a parking spot, he's requesting the variance. Did I get that right, Mr. Schakers?
You're correct.
Okay, so unless anybody on the board wanted to weigh in or feel strolling about adding driveway or curb cut, I think we can move on from this issue. All right, I see none. So with that, we'll open it up to public comment. April, if you would open it up to the public, please? If you're here from the public, please raise your hand or reach out to April, and you'll be able to speak on this application.
We have one, hold on one moment.
April, why don't you just read your email again?
clerk@belmar.com.
Hi, Linda Sharkis, Fourth Avenue.
Hello, just swear you in for a second time tonight, good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, it will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, let the record reflect the witness has been sworn.
I want to say, this is a great application, converting a three-family house to a single-family, basically maintaining the same design and the feel of the neighborhood, I think is great. Robbie did a great job on your design, and you picked a good architect to work with you, as well as a good attorney. Thank you, look forward to seeing the new building.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharkis. Anyone else from the public here to speak on this application?
Nope.
Thank you, April. With that, we'll close the public portion and open it back up to board comment, and we start with Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that. I just, you know, for those of us who have been in town for a long time, the design is just keeping it with the architecture, that the traditional architecture, we see the wraparound porch, you know, just the whole look and feel of the home that's being built. just the whole look and feel of the home that's being built there is just wonderful. So I think what's being asked for here is, you know, minor compared to, you know, most builds that we see going on. And I have no objection whatsoever. And I'm strongly in favor of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Ross?
Yep, you had me sold when you said you were converting multiple family to a single family. But other than that, it was a great presentation, very to the point. The architectural drawings are really nice. I especially like the hand drawing. I think that's sort of a lost art. I mean, we don't see too many of the hand drawn architecture in there. I like that. A lot of computer generated stuff these days. The design looks very nice and I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Melengo?
Yes, I'm in favor of the application. It's a nice design. I think it will bring a lot of benefits and I would have a yes vote on this.
Thank you. Mr. Capoli?
I too also in favor of the application. It'd really be a pleasure when your house is built. Maybe I could wave to you on a porch when I come by because I come down 10th a lot. Say hello to you and wish you all the luck in the world. Because what's there definitely needs to go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli and Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also am in favor of the application and just incidentally, the English U's you're going to use, you're going to put in there. In England, they are, I think churches were required to put them in because the English made their longbows out of that, so, and arrows. So if you, you know, want to get into that business in the, you know, 10 or 20 years, you might be able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. I too am in favor of the application and I think it's going to be great for Belmar. Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Absolutely, sir. I think I took the liberty of putting down some potential conditions of approval. Our standard ones would be compliance with all the promises, commitments and representations the development team made tonight, compliance with all applicable outside approvals, building and construction regulations, compliance with any applicable affordable housing regulations, contributions, directives. We usually have a 24-month timeframe within which to have the CFOs issued or any agreed upon extension. We, all right, we're not going to have the third parking space. A big condition of note was that the pre-existing non-conforming multifamily use will be perpetually and knowingly permanently abandoned. And Mr. Schypers, just for the record, your client recognizes that and has done that with your consultation. He knows what it means to abandon that pre-existing use, correct?
Yes, he does.
Thank you. The air conditioning condensers will be located in a zoning compliant location. I think, Mr. Chairman, how we usually phrase the utilities is the good faith efforts to place the utilities underground, provided the utility companies allow and provided it can be done in a reasonable fashion. And we usually have a requirement that the applicant report back to us grading and drainage details to be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer to the extent necessary, compliance with any applicable FEMA regulations. And garage itself is not to be utilized as living spaces. It has electric service, but no water, no sewer. And installation of whether it's dry wells or some type of working with the borough engineer to address his concerns and recommendations regarding stormwater management. And I think that was it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy. All right, can I have a motion to approve the application? It's summarized by Mr. Kennedy.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, in a second.
A second at motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Melengo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes. Congratulations. Your application is approved.
Thank you, Board, on behalf of Mr. Truesdale and the architect. Thank you, Mr. Truesdale. Congratulations. And Mr. Hesberger, it's been my sincere pleasure meeting you and working with you.
Yeah, I thank you too to the board for all you do and I look forward to moving, getting the house built and moving into Belmar.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. With that, why don't we take a five-minute, actually make an eight-minute break and we're going to start right back up again at 8:30 sharp.
All right.
Thanks, April. Go ahead.
All right, recordings resumed. We can.
Do you want to do roll call?
Sure. Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Capoli?
Here.
Mr. Melengo?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Lisco?
Here. All right, our third and final application of the night is Louis Mandia at 7008 B Street. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, as the applicant's team enter and zoom in, April, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, and just two things. Number one, we're going to, well, three things. We're going to swear in Ted to the third and final time tonight. Ted, you are the zoning officer and construction official of the borough of Belmar. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know of, so help you God? Sorry, Ted, did you hear me?
I think he's working on it, Kevin. He's still on mute.
I do. I do.
Okay, so Ted, let the record reflect Ted is sworn, so thank you. And next is in terms of the notice. If there's anyone here in the listening public or attending public who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice, please raise your computer hands or enter an email to our board secretary who is manning her email, which is April.
clerk@belmar.com.
Okay, and while we're doing that, Mr. Chairman, this is a use variance application. So April, just for the record, how many voting members do we have tonight?
We have six.
Okay, so what I would say to the applicant's team is just as a matter of law, for this type of application, you need five affirmative yes votes to proceed. So if, and I have no idea whether the application is going to be approved or denied or what the score will be. But if you had four people vote yes and two people vote no, that application would be denied because under the law, under this type of variance, you need five affirmative yes votes. So I'm going to get back to you in a moment. You obviously have the ability to say, I don't want to proceed tonight because I want a full complement of seven voting board members. Or you can say, I at least want to proceed tonight and we'll determine later on whether or not we're going to have a vote. And so we'll get back to that in a moment. So April, has anyone chimed in about notice issues or concerns?
I have two members that raised their hands.
Okay.
Let's start with the first one.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, may I say something as far as noticing goes?
Sure, sure. Go ahead, Mr. Capoli.
I noticed that one part of the town is in Bel, the project is in Belmar and the other, across the street is Lake Como. Now, do they have to be notified too?
Yeah, I mean, if the, if there is any part of another town that is located within 200 feet of the development site, they absolutely do have to be noticed. April, did they have, was Lake Como on our list of?
I don't have the pickbark in front of me.
Hey, April, I actually have the, and the stubs right in front of me right here. And I went through them this afternoon. And there are a few in here, Lake Como addresses as well, just given that in the 200-foot radius that Lake Como is kind of right on the cusp of Belmar and Lake Como.
Hi, good, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Hi, I'm the property owner Louis Mandia.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm the borough board attorney. I guess the question would be, did you get a certified list from Lake Como as well?
Yep, it was included within.
Great.
Within, yep.
So that answers the question for Mr. Capoli. Thank you. So April, did the other member, did the public come forward yet?
Yes, we have Len here.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Len, if you could just state your name and address, please?
Sure, Len Canarazi, 107 and a half, 16th Avenue, Belmar.
Okay, did you have a question regarding the notice?
Yes, the notice. Can that be emailed if requested so that we can actually click on the link for the Zoom? Conference?
Oh, I mean, you just want to see how to click on?
In other words, I received the paper copy and I typed in the link manually, but is there a way to have it emailed in the future?
Yeah.
You can, it's actually posted on our website.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
If you go to the calendar, the website calendar where it shows today's meeting and click on it, it has the information there.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
And then there's one more. Hold on one sec.
Yes, good evening. This is Mark Lee. I live across the street from 1708 E Street.
Good evening, Mr. Lee. Did you have a question or comment regarding the notice?
Yeah, just, we were not notified. We're certainly within 200 feet of the property. I don't know what being notified gets me in terms of, you know, information in order to either support or not support the application. But I don't have any notification. I did hear about it. Obviously, I'm here.
Well, you know what, and thank you. That's an excellent question. And just to start with, under the law, notice is required to be sent by the applicant to those individuals or entities who or which own property within 200 feet of the development site. And now what happens is the applicant gets a list from the borough of Belmar and from the borough adjacent town in this situation. And the applicant has to send the notice to those individuals who are on that list. Now, there is a little bit of a kink in the law, so to speak. All the law says is that the notice has to be sent to the correct address at least 10 days prior to the hearing. So we're going to check and see if you're on the list. And I think Mr. Mandia is reviewing the documents. So hopefully, we're going to find something that says you were in fact, it was mailed. So I don't know why you wouldn't have received it, but that's number one. So that's a legal requirement, at least that it be sent to the right address. And the next thing is, in terms of what it gets you, is obviously, you know, we do everything we do and in accordance with the municipal land use law is done with the eye of transparency, to do everything in front of the public, in front of the public view, so that the public can comment and you know, affirm or, you know, complain or object and express comments and concerns. So let me get back to Mr. Mandia for a second. Mr. Mandia, do you have a comment for Mark Lee or do you have a receipt for him?
Sure thing. What, Mark, what exactly is the address on the property?
1705 B Street.
1705 B Street, okay. So comprised within that list, I actually don't see Mark on there. I have 1702, 1704, 1710. And then 18th Snyder. 18th Snyder.
Since they're all even, they're probably on the Belmar side.
Right. Right, and we also, I do not see Mark on there, but I also will submit an affidavit to the, to the Belmar newspaper as well with the information for tonight's call and our proposition as well.
Right, so, so do you have, Mr. Mandia, do you have the, you're looking at the Belmar list, correct?
Correct, yep, that's what I have up right in front of me.
And there's no entry for Mr. Lee on it?
There is not, no.
Okay, so, Mr. Lee, we have another little odd provision of New Jersey law. New Jersey, and actually, let me just ask, April, do you have access to the list or not right now?
No, I do not, sorry.
Okay, so there's another weird or unusual or provision of New Jersey law, which says that the applicant is allowed to rely on the list even if that list is inaccurate or is missing information. So that's one thing. Now, the other thing is, it might be that Mr. Mandia, sometimes an attorney would say, well, even though I did nothing wrong and I did everything right and I served everyone that's on the list, I just don't want to take a chance with this and I, you know, I want to renotice just Mr. Lee and come back. Or Mr. Mandia might say, listen, I'm entitled to rely on the list and I certainly don't want to harm anyone and I don't want anyone to be shut out of the process. And I'm just awfully glad that Mr. Lee is here, participating here, quote unquote here, at least participating remotely. Mr. Mandia, I'd ask, what are your thoughts?
Definitely, and extremely appreciative of Mr. Lee joining tonight's phone call and concerned with Belmar neighborhood as am I. I'm indifferent unless he has any objection. I'd love to move forward with this. And I'm more than happy to send him the newspaper article as well and even the the actual variance list as well and potentially even the plans, if that's helpful, just so we can get a better understanding of what I'm trying to put there on my property.
Let me ask Mr. Lee, do you have any particular preferences or objections right now? I mean, just not in terms of the substantive, but just in terms of, is your position that I don't think, you don't want him to proceed? Or that you're okay with him proceeding just because you're here and you're going to be able to view everything and listen to everything?
Well, one of the questions that I had was I didn't know what proper notice would have bought me. For example, I may have had an opportunity to review the plans in advance at the local zoning office or something of that nature.
Yeah.
Be informed. And the second point I would like to make is that while it is certainly true that I am here, I'm certainly also aware that other folks within the 200 feet of the property who are on Lake Como, for example, and not on a Belmar list might have been interested in the plans for the property as well and are not here.
All right, so and so we'll take the two questions. Number one, in the good old days before we had the pandemic, the purpose of the notice is to put you on record or a notice that this application is pending. And it's supposed to give you an opportunity to sort of know the general parameters of what's being proposed and the general parameters of the relief being sought. And the knowledge that you could go to Town Hall and inspect the application materials and plans. Now with this remote hearing process, it sort of says that you're allowed to go online because Borough Hall had been, had been closed. You can go online and visit and inspect and review application materials in that regard. So let me just ask April, in terms of April, do you recall that there was a Lake Como list as well?
I do not.
Okay, okay. So anyway, so that's what you would have been entitled to. You would have known that the thing was going. And that's the most important thing because we don't want anyone to be in a position where you don't, you know, you don't know what's going on, particularly right, right across your street. right, right across your street. Now, Mr. Lee, you had referenced other, other neighbors that you think might not have received notice, I mean, do you know that for, that you just think, or you fear, or how do you know they did not receive notice?
They were asked if they had received any notice, and they said no.
Okay, so.
So Kennedy, could I comment when you're done?
Sure.
Mr. Kennedy, likewise, thank you.
When I was visiting the property myself with the blueprints, I was approached by neighbors on the Lake Como side telling me that they weren't noticed. So we may have to look into this Lake Como list and verify the notifications.
Okay. And Mr. Mandia, you had some comments?
Yeah, sure, if, Mr. Lee, if there's anyone in mind that perhaps would like, like to see the plans, I'm more, more than happy to share them via email. So just feel free to reach out to me, I'm happy to share my personal email as well.
Okay, so, so what we have now is, is a situation, and Mr. Mandia, respectfully, let me just go over a couple scenarios, and I just want to, you know, make, have everyone, you know, make a fully informed decision, and it's ultimately going to be the board's determination as to what we want to do, and it'll, I think, they're going to ask for my recommendation as well. But there is a school of thought which says that even if you did everything 100% correct, and I'm not aware that you've done anything wrong, but there is a school of thought that says, if you, before you want to go down this road, if, if there's going to be a concern about the sufficiency of the notice, there are some people who might say, some attorneys under these circumstances might say, I know I did everything right, but I just don't want a chance that between that many people that are apparently complaining and or concerned, and you might just not want to, to chance it, and out of an abundance of caution, there might be a school of thought that says, would you just, you know, renotice anyone who carried this for until the next meeting, and just renotice if any of those people on the list, we can verify it tomorrow. And I know that's a tough ask, and I'm not even saying that that's a requirement, but I just wanted to, I just, I don't want to do anything to, to jam you up. Let's just say, and I have no idea if the application is going to be approved or denied or approved with conditions, but if, let's just say you get an approval, and if someone challenges it, challenges it because of notice, that's not going to be really good for you to begin with in the long run. So I would just add an abundance of caution, knowing what you've gone through to be here tonight, and I appreciate that, but, Mr. Chairman, it would be my, you know, respectfully encourage that if we could carry this, if, if the applicant consented, knowing that, you know, and I can see he's, he's upset, and I appreciate that, because it's, I know you're prepared to go tonight. Mr. Chairman, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, we do take the notice very seriously and, and want it to be correct for all our applicants. And I would certainly, Mr. Kennedy, take your recommendation that this should be, should be carried, to make sure that that notice is correct.
I mean, Mr. April, and again, Mr. Mandia, I know this is a tough ask, but I also, I don't want you to go through everything, and if you were to get an approval, and then if it were challenged, then it's not so great for you, and I guess we're going to have to learn from this. In the pre-pandemic world, we really wouldn't have this discussion, because we'd have the million of borough records in the, right here, that April could go and just get them in her office. And, and, you know, we could say, hey, here's the list, here's everyone who was served, and everyone who wasn't served, and here are the green slips and the white slips, and we could just do it, but with this remote hearing process, that, that's a little bit of a kink, so that, that hurts you as well. So I think we, you know, would be better served if you would agree to carry this. Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming we could try to put him on first for the next meeting, with the understanding that he would have to just make sure we could get, you know, I would work with him to make sure that he did in fact serve everybody. I mean, that, that's what I'm thinking, Mr. Mandia, I mean, how upsetting is that to you?
Just full transparency, and again, I respect any decision that the board has to make here, but like, this is the second time now that I sent out notifications to the paper, as well as the 200-foot list, and like, everything is associated with the cost at the end of the day.
You know what, can I just jump in for one second? Because you're making an excellent point, and let me, let me just say, you would not have to renotice again unless there are people who are missed, and then you'd have to notify those people. What we would do is, because that was a perfectly valid point you're making, we would carry this to the next meeting so that there'd be no further notice required, except if it turns out that you did miss some people on the Belmar list or the Lake Como list, you're going to have to notify them.
Right.
And if you didn't miss anybody, then you will not have any further noticing on your part, we will announce it tonight, and save you that time, save you that aggravation, and save you that cost.
I appreciate that. And April, as you know, I stopped by yesterday and dropped you off all the stubs, as well as the affidavit as well, so there should be confirmation on who exactly I sent, who exactly I sent the 200-foot list out to.
Yeah, and like I said, we just, in this remote world, we don't, in the, like I said, in the good old days, April would just go take 10 minutes and go, you know, get all the, the files. So I think it would be in your best interest, and I'm going to give you, I'll give you my cell phone number so you can call me, and we'll, we'll work this out. Mr. Chairman, that would be, I mean, I'm going to, Mr. Mandia, it's up to you, we're going to have to give you the rec, you know, you're going to have to consent to adjourn this, but I just think it's knowing what you're going to have to go through, and knowing what's riding on this, I just, I don't think it's really worth the, the risk to have this notice issue hanging out there.
I'm, I'm all in favor with majority rule, I just, I just hope for, you know, people on the, on the phone call, again, I appreciate them chiming in, like Mr. Lee and such, that, again, you know, there is a cost associated with all this, and I'm going to have to come out of pocket again to make sure that my architect and the attorney are on the call again. So I just want that to be, to be kept in mind.
And I'm sorry, is your attorney here? Who's your attorney?
Nicholas Gonchar, he should be on the, on the call right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I should ask Mr. Gonchar, do you have any questions or concerns?
One of the phone numbers that's listed here, did he call in?
Yeah, Nicholas may have, may have, he was on when I had joined.
I have a 201 number and a 703 number. It's one of them.
703.
703?
No, he's a, he's a, he's a 347 number, rather. He may have just dropped.
Okay.
No big deal, I'm all in favor of what majority rule is, if, if, if you think that's what's fair and that makes the most sense, then that works for me.
I think it's in your best interest, and obviously, I represent the zoning board, I don't represent you, I don't represent any of the members of the public, but we really do just have to make sure that this is, is done correctly, and I know I just said that I would speak with you, but just have your, I think ethically, you have your attorney call me, and, and we'll, we'll work that out. And so, Mr. Chairman, unless the board members object, I would respectfully suggest that we carry this, and, you know, to the next meeting, without the, without the requirement of any further public notice, unless the applicant missed people on the list or didn't have that second list. So we'll, and those, those people would be renoticed, but April, what would the next hearing date be?
July 23rd.
July 23rd, and is that going to be, just out of curiosity, is that a live meeting, a remote meeting?
That'll be a Zoom meeting.
That'll be a Zoom meeting, at what time?
We want to keep with the 6:00 PM, we haven't advertised for it yet.
Okay.
Do with the 6:00 PM still?
Mr. Chairman, does 6 o'clock work?
Yeah, does anybody have any objection to keeping the Zoom meetings at 6:00 PM? Just raise your hand, and we'll, we'll give you some space. All right, I see no objection, so we'll keep it at 6:00 PM.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, let me just ask for, Mr. Mandia, on the record, do you agree that we're going to carry this to July 23rd, to the remote meeting of July 23rd, 2020, at 6 o'clock PM? No further notice is required unless you were, missed somebody that was on the Belmar list or the Lake Como list, and we would encourage members of the public, including Mr. Canarazi, and Mark Lee, and all others, to get the login instructions for this meeting, we don't even know them yet, but they will be advertised at least by the borough, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And so, Mr. Mandia, for the record, do you consent to extend the timeframe within, within which the board has to act?
Sure, I consent under the agreement, though, that I also don't have to refile the affidavit with the Belmar newspaper as well.
Correct, and again, only notice if, if, if you miss somebody, so.
People who are missed in, in the Lake Como side, if, if they're.
Or, or the Belmar side. And, Mr. Chairman, I think we should just, for the record, have, have a motion to do that, and we'll second, and we just do an all call, I mean, all in favor for the vote.
Okay, I'll make that motion to carry this meeting to the July 23rd meeting. Can we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Malango.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and so I would just say, for the record, Mr. Lee and Mr. Canarazi, if you let your neighbors know that we're going to come back July 23rd.
Okay, thank you, and I would like to take Mr. Mandia up on his generous offer to provide the materials electronically, how would we execute that?
Sure, unless the board has any objections, feel, feel free to jot down my email address, and I'd be happy to share with you the blueprints.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay. You want me to give you my, my email address right now?
I, I'm ready to take it if, if that's all right.
Yep, Louis, L-O-U-I-S, Mandia, M as in Mary, A as in Apple, and as in Nancy, D as in David, I as in Igloo, A as in Apple, at gmail.com, so it's first name, last name, at gmail.com.
Great, thank you.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Mandia, the board thanks you, we know that it's not easy to prepare for one of these hearings, and so thank you for, for helping us out of this situation.
Not a problem, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, that's the end of our meeting tonight. Kevin, or April, was there any business we needed to go over before adjourning?
Not on my end, sir.
No.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
You, Mr. Fitzgerald, in a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
See you in July.